And say that we'll start our meeting tonight with an invocation and pledge of allegiance, as is our custom call at this point, Reverend Dr. Ralph Hawkins to come up and lead us in the invocation. And I've got a couple of 4-H students who will come up and stand behind Dr. Hawkins and lead us in the pledge of allegiance when he's through with the invocation. So would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Commissioners, citizens, let's pause in a moment of prayer. God of all good grace and love, thanks and praise this evening to you and to you alone for giving us this day now nearly spent, for giving us this evening for matters communal and civic, and soon enough for giving us another night for rest and restoration. Despite how shrill so much public speech has become, we choose tonight to bless you, oh God, for all the spaces we share in common in this life, including especially this county, this city and her many peoples. You have not made us to be alone, but in fact you give us family and friends to be sure, but also neighbors and coworkers and fellow citizens, colleagues in matters of civility and the common good. So then, oh God, bless these elected among us to lead us in those better ways. Bless their efforts to bless the people of Macon and Bibb County. Grant them wisdom, patience, endurance. Help us all to see with fresh eyes the sacred value of neighborhoods and communities and that good that is common to us all, all of us having been made in your image. And thanks too, oh God, for everyone in civil service among us, from clerks to cleanup crews, from crime fighters to firefighters, for all who served this county behind the scenes, especially in unsung ways. We bless and we thank you, oh God. All of this, we pray this night with grateful hearts, and I make this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, thank you. Our invocation tonight was given by Reverend Dr. Ralph Hawkins, who, as I said earlier, is pastor of Northminster Presbyterian Church. Reverend Dr. Ralph Hawkins is pastor of Northminster on Wimby's Road. He began his ministry there in September of 2018, having served churches in Pennsylvania, Virginia, and Georgia over the last 25 years. He and his 14-year-old daughter Ella live here in Macon. She attends Mount Salvo's Academy. In addition to pastoral ministry and being a dad, Dr. Hawkins is also an avid railroad historian. That's interesting. And photographer, maintaining a scrapbook of railroad pictures and history at Hawkinsrails.net.
Yes, sir.
Hawkinsrails.net. If you want to check out some of it. And again, thank you very much, Dr. Hawkins, for being here. Our 4-H students that led us in the invocation, I'm sorry, led us in the pledge of allegiance, Jasmine Martin. Jasmine, would you stand for us? Jasmine is a 10th grade student at Southwest High School. Jasmine's been 4-H for four years and was elected this month, I guess that was last month maybe now, to serve as the 2019-2020 Bibb County 4-H president. Woohoo! And Jasmine also has great success, district project achievement this past March, first place win over 22 other individuals in performing arts instrumental category. Jasmine has played a flute to victory and will be competing this summer at the state level at Rock Eagle and Atlanta. Jasmine was recognized as the Bibb County 4-H Awards Program, as the recipient of Outstanding Community Service Award. She's worked and completed over 26 community service projects and has even led workshops and events for younger 4-Hers to teach them ways to give back to their community. Jasmine, thank you very much for being with us tonight. And Zoe Economides, Zoe. Zoe is an 11th grade student at the Academy for Classical Education. That's Ace Academy charter school. Zoe has been a member of the Bibb County 4-H Club for five years and loves art. She's the leader in Bibb County, serves as the Bibb County 4-H reporter, and was also elected this past March to serve on the Northwest District 4-H Senior Board of Directors. Zoe was elected by 500 of her peers in the Northwest District. Zoe also has placed first in the district project achievement in the arts and crafts category out of 19 individuals and will be competing in July at the state competition in Atlanta. Zoe also has received Outstanding High School 4-Her Award at the 4-H Awards Program. You know, this day and age when you hear so much bad about young people, isn't it great to see two such wonderful examples of youth that are doing the right thing? Congratulations each of you. Thank you for being here. We wish you all the best. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and the minutes of our pre-commission meeting of June the 18th and our regular commission meeting on June the 18th have been prepared and published. Are there any changes, additions, corrections? And if not, can I get a motion to approve it by Commissioner Nguyen? Got a motion. Second, by Commissioner Schlesinger. Discussion here none. All in favor of approval of the minutes as prepared, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are adopted. There are no invited guests tonight, but we're glad each and every one of you are here, but no special presentations for which we've invited folks. But we're, as I say, glad that each and every one of you are here. The next item on our agenda are public comments on agenda items. If you signed up to talk on an item that is on the agenda for action tonight, this is the opportunity that you have to address us before we vote. If you're here to talk about and signed up to talk about a non-agenda item, you'll be recognized later in the program. But regardless of whether you have signed up to talk about an agenda item or whether you are here to talk about a non-agenda item, these rules of protocol are in our official rules, and I'd like to refresh everybody's recollection and ask that you would govern yourselves accordingly. For conduct of members of the public in meetings generally. Item number three says, anyone who wants to speak must first be recognized by the presiding officer. Number four, all comments must be directed to the presiding officer and not to individual commissioners, staff, or others. Number five, all meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Number six, personal attacks and derogatory or inappropriate remarks will not be permitted, and there shall be no use of profanity during the meeting. Members of the commission now, conduct of members of the commission. Starting at number four, commissioners should not take phone calls, texts, or email, or use social networking sites, chat rooms, or other internet sites during the meeting. Commissioners shall conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner. Commissioners desiring to speak must first be recognized by the presiding officer. Commissioners may only address the motion that is being discussed. Commissioners shall direct their remarks to the mayor, presiding officer, and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in the audience. Only one commissioner at a time is permitted to speak. Commissioners shall not interrupt any other person who has the floor. Personal attacks and inappropriate remarks shall be ruled out of order by the mayor. Commissioners may not use the commission meetings to make derogatory comments about particularly employees or to air personal grievances with the mayor or other commissioners, and there shall be no use of profanity during the meeting. I think we do a good job of abiding by those rules. Just read them to remind us of what they are and ask for your participation and your cooperation as we go forward. Having said that, we've got a couple of folks that want to talk to us tonight about agenda items. First, Mr. Mike Odom wants to talk to us about item K, funds to pay for the sheriff's office and non-budgeted overtime. Mr. Odom, thank you very much for being here, sir. We appreciate your patience and your perseverance. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We all, including me, needed to be reminded of this. Thank you, sir. It's good to be reminded of how we're supposed to conduct ourselves. I'm here to talk about item K, which was, you're going to be voting on to approve unbudgeted overtime for the sheriff's office. That's money you're now going to have to take out of the general fund. You know, this is an important issue for me. It's not an emotional issue. It's a pragmatic issue. It's an issue that if not solved, it has a very predictable and unpleasant future. We study, let me flashback a little bit. We study history for a reason, and that's so that we will learn the mistakes other people make in the past and we won't repeat them. I'm sure you've heard the phrase that Nero was fiddling while Rome was burning. That phrase was generated from an actual historical fact. When Rome was collapsing, Nero was only interested in satisfying his personal appetites and the personal appetites of those closest to him. Well, certain issues like this one for compensation increases, whether it's for the first responders or the entire employee base of Macon-Bibb County, the commission is fiddling. You keep going back and forth and no action's being taken here. So I'd like to make, address a couple of things. I'm speaking to you, Mr. Mayor, but it was reported that a commissioner made a comment about, well, it's more important that we rebuild the general fund. Well, this money is coming out of the general fund that you're going to vote on today, and if you don't address this issue now, it's going to get worse next year because of continued attrition. So you're going to be faced with pulling more money out of the general fund again, probably more than the $1.3 million. This can be solved without raising the budget, increasing property taxes, or attacking the general fund. So, you know, we need to stop fiddling. Let me speak to the commissioner who made the comment about, well, let's just wait till the Compensation Committee does its review and gives its recommendation. Are we really afraid that we're going to give some sort of salary increase to our staff and then six months or eight months from now, a Compensation Committee is going to come up and say, you guys were foolish, they're overpaid already? I mean, what is the logic behind delaying something that virtually everyone agrees we need to do? So stop fiddling. This is a disappointing event in that you can't solve a very, very small problem. There are so many competing agendas and so many private and public comments being made, you can't solve this one problem. So it doesn't engender a lot of confidence in the ability of this governing body to solve a big problem. So look, whether you allocate $2 million to first responders or $1.8 million to all the 1,800 employees here, take a step. Quit posturing, and I say, stop fiddling. Take an interim step. See what the Compensation Committee says next spring or whenever it can render its results. Now, you're going to have to be honest with your constituents. Something of this importance is going to require somebody's sacrifice. If you don't want to raise property taxes, increase the budget, and you don't want to withdraw from the general fund, somebody's going to have to have monies, a large group, specific groups, to transfer it over, to pay for this. But, you know, Macon is, you know, stop fiddling. Macon is not burning, but it's kind of smoldering right now. So just take a step. Come together, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Odom. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Sarah Hunt has signed up, wants to also talk to us about the consent agenda, item D on the consent agenda. Ms. Hunt, thank you for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the commission started, our mayor pro tem had a sidebar with me and explained to me some things that have been put in place to take care of the issue that I have with that, and we're going to just wait and see how things work out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that, and I'll put you back over for non-agenda comments as well, because you signed up for that as well, so. We'll call on her at the end. That brings us now to committee reports, and the first standing committee that will report is Operations and Finance, and that'll be, that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. Operations and Finance Committee last met on June 25, 2019. We took the following action. The committee approved the five-year short-term WARC program. The committee approved appropriating $140,000 from SPOSS bond proceeds for the purchase of Booker T. Washington Community Center. The committee approved the grant for $10,000 from State Farm Mutual for the Teen Drive Safety Summer Program and adopted the ECD, CDBG, Home, and ESG budget for fiscal year 2020. The committee approved the following agreements. A contract with GDOT for lighting for State Route 22 to Filter Mill Road Roundabout. A lease agreement with the State Properties Commission for space at 560 Oglethorpe Street. And an agreement with Mullerin Pyrotechnics for July 4 fireworks. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. $32,000 in information technology repairs and maintenance computer hardware to small equipment and improvements account. $1.3 million in the sheriff's office salary wages full-time to be transferred to their overtime. $23,000 in animal welfare from salaries to professional services, repairs, cooperers, rental, and operating supplies. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. The next report will be the Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Nguyen. Vice Chairman Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on June 25, 2019 and took the following action. The committee approved a slate of nominations for those seats currently held by Joyce Shafer, Patricia Robinson, and Ray Pippen on the board of the Macon-Bibb County Hospital Authority. The committee approved the error regarding the nomination of members to the Friends of the Rosa Parks Square Committee and appointed the following individuals. James Beal, Jean Bragg, Nancy Cleveland, Dr. Carmelita Dillard, C. Jack Ellis, Louis Hargrove, Sarah Hunt, Alex Morrison, Georgia Mohammed, and Kunju Patel. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee. Sorry? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mohammed. Direct your comments to the chair and then I'll use the microphone to try to get it. Thank you, sir. And Vice Chairman Nguyen, thank you for that report. Next, Public Safety, and that report from the Public Safety Committee will be given to us by Chairman Shepard. Chairman Shepard?
Safety Committee met June 25, 2018, 2019, is what it did be, and took the following action. The committee heard from the owner of the BP Gas and Food Mart located at 2760 Montpelier Avenue. He is undertaking the task of making numerous improvements to the location, and the sheriff's office will issue conditions for the location, which he's already done, and then they will be granted an alcohol license once the owner agrees to the conditions, and the committee will consider the license again. This concludes the report of Public Safety.
Thank you, Chairman Shepard. And final, is Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Facilities and Engineering met as well, June 25, and took the following action. The committee approved the installation of a streetlight on Lake Lock Drive pursuant to Article 10 of Chapter 29 of the code to be paid from the facility's management budget, services to government electricity line item. That completes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, for that report. That brings us now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is for alcohol beverage licenses. Each of these licenses, and the next three that I will read to you, are accompanied by the sheriff's certification of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, the payment of the appropriate amount of license fees by the business development services for the type of alcoholic beverages that they want to sell, a certificate of zoning compliance by the Macon-Bibb County Planning and Zoning, certification from the county engineer that the site at which the alcohol be sold meets all of the necessary distance requirements in state law, and a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. Each of these applications is accompanied by that documentation. And the first one, the applicant is Kusbu Patel. The name of the business is Decodol MAA 2018 LLC, doing business is AMPM Food Mart located at 2904 Sherling Drive, and that is for beer package sales to go at that location. The next applicant is Mohammed Khan. The business name is Houston Avenue ENT 2017 LLC, and that's located at 3309 Holly Road in LaZella, Georgia, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The third is Mr. Cleve Wembley, and the business name is Touchdown Seafood Bar and Grill located at 2440 Riverside Drive, Macon, Georgia, and that is for beer, wine, and liquor mixed drinks to be consumed on the premises at that location. The committee as a whole recommends approval of those three licenses. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of those three licenses, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those three licenses will be issued as requested. The next is a license application for Mr. Madon, M-A-D-A-N, Popli, or Popli, P-O-P-L-I, and it is for the Pineona Gas and Food Mart located at 1803 Pineona Avenue in Macon. The committee of the whole found that during the sheriff's background check, the sheriff's office discovered that Mr. Popli has pending felony RICO charges against him in Houston County arising out of violations of state coin-operated amusement machine laws. An article from the Macon Telegraph describing some of the allegations of the case was attached and incorporated into the sheriff's report. These charges directly allege improper operation of convenience store business by Mr. Popli and should have been reported as part of his application. His failure to include that information on his application is deemed in the opinion of our county attorney's office to be grounds upon which we could deny the license request. The committee of the whole recommends that this license request be denied. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of denying this license application, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, this license is denied. The final license is a license from BJP Gas and Food Mart LLC located at 2760 Montpelier Avenue, and the sheriff has recommended that the license be issued only upon compliance with certain recommendations made by his office. Does anybody have the sheriff's recommendation so that I can read them verbatim? Janice, do you have that? The sheriff recommends that the applicant make the following changes at this place of business in order to get the license. Number one, move the existing dumpster to a better location on the property. Number two, repair the fence on the property. Number three, put no loitering signs on the property. Number four, strictly follow the laws concerning the selling of alcohol and cigarettes, i.e. no single cigarette sales, and adhere to the age limit when selling alcohol and cigarettes. Ensure that the store's security cameras are operable. And lastly, provide adequate lighting at night on the property. The committee of the whole recommends that these changes be made within 30 days or that the commission will consider revoking the license application. On this, on these grounds, the committee of the whole recommends that the license be approved with these conditions being met within 30 days. Commission of the whole recommends approval of that. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing the license subject to compliance with these conditions within 30 days, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no? Two no, two no, so that'll be a 6 to 2. The ayes have it, the license will be issued with those conditions. That brings us now to the next item on the agenda, which is old business. The first item of old business, item A, is a resolution to approve a development agreement for Central City Commons and to authorize the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority to issue bonds to MMI Thornton LLC and its affiliates. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into the intergovernmental contract with the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority to provide for the issuance of bonds, the acquisition of the parking decks, and the making of certain payments concerning the parking decks, and to enter into the pilot agreement with the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority, MMI-Thorton LLC and its affiliates, the Bibb County School District, the Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors, and the Macon-Bibb County Tax Commissioner, to provide for certain payments in lieu of taxes on certain parcels, all in furtherance of the Central City Commons Development Project containing a hotel and a parking deck to be known as Macon Hot Place and a mixed-use retail and multifamily development with the parking deck and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Pro Tem, got your light on first, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This has been a long-awaited project. One thing that citizens should know and realize is that the developers are local Macon natives. Usually when you see these type of projects, they're from folks from out of town. The Urban Development Authority has done a great job of helping steer this project along, and a lot of times when we see work happening downtown, we don't often can see the results. I assure you that you will be able to physically see the results of this new parking deck and the things that will follow, and I'm excited to continue to see progress being made and look forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to appoint Nationwide to provide record-keeping and administration services for our new retirement plans, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt the Health Care and Retirement Benefits Committee recommendation to select Nationwide to provide record-keeping and administration services for the newly-created Macon-Bibb County 457B deferred compensation and 401A plans and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Nguyen, got your light on now.
Just wanted to say that I'm very happy to see this going forward finally. It's a thing overdue.
Thank you. I think a lot of people share that sentiment. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Allen, got your light on now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mr. Mayor, when we put this committee together and this board voted unanimously for it. for it, it really gave us great pride that the people, we had retirees, we had regular employees, we had the citizens of Macon and Bibb County, and they gave their time and their effort to come down and help us to put this together, and we used them on several different projects, and I hope in the future we can continue to use them. Bottom line is, we're helping the citizens of Macon and Bibb County who we work for, and I just, I really feel good about it, and I want to thank everybody here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution approving a five-year short-term work program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the submission of the Macon-Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for Compliance Review and for Other Purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance with a committee amendment to acquire the old Booker T. Washington building for up to $140,000, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to $140,000 for SPOS bond proceeds or revenues from the 2018 Park and Recreation slash Booker T. Washington Community Center line item to provide funding for the acquisition costs and other fees related to the purchase of the Booker T. Washington Community Center property consisting of 1.87 acres located at 401 Monroe Street and 1479 Jefferson Street to authorize the mayor to take any and all action to purchase of the Booker T. Washington Community Center property for its appraised value of $131,000 and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Winn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment that I think that going forward with this would be great for the Pleasant Hill neighborhood because it's a, it was a key place for children and for people in the area to use, and now we're going to buy it and renovate it and use it again, and I think this is something good we're doing for the neighborhood. It helps go along with the blight that's being taken care of in that area, and it'll work towards that too for the community. I think it's a great move for the community for us to do this and reopen it.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Winn. Commissioner Allen, got your light on next, sir.
Mayor, were we able, or does anyone know that we were able to keep the name Booker T. Washington Community Center? Does that still come with the building?
I'm going to ask the county attorney to speak to that. My impression is that was the amendment that was added to this in the contract. Let me just ask the county attorney to s-
We added that to the resolution, and we'll make sure that as part of the closing documents, we put that in there. If we have a problem, I'll let you know.
That was one of the main issues, you know, we talked about before, and I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the ordinance with the committee amendment, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next is a grant from State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance for our teen driver safety program operated by the sheriff. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company in the amount of $10,000 with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the Teen Driver Safety Summer Program and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is the approval of the Economic and Community Development Department's CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant, HOME, and ESG, which is Emergency Solutions Grant Proposed Budget, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to adopt the Economic and Community Development Department's CDBG, HOME, and ESG Proposed Budget for fiscal year 2020 Budget and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for lighting at the new proposed roundabout at Eisenhower Parkway and Fulton Mill Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the purpose of obtaining lighting for the State Route 22 Fulton Mill Road Roundabout Project with the cost of materials and installation to be paid by GDOT and cost of operation and maintenance to be paid by Macon-Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Here, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. I told you I won't be on much tonight. It seems like I'm on a lot. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank this board again for something we've been trying to do even from the old board of get something out on Fulton Mill Road at Eisenhower ties into Heath Road, and, you know, there's been a lot of accidents, a lot of fatalities out there, and this board stuck together, and we finally getting a roundabout out there, I meant, and a roundabout is better than nothing, and a roundabout has worked. We have, we do have caution lights out there, and those individuals that travel that road, I don't think they know what caution lights are for, if you want to know the truth about it, but this will slow them down, and it will stop a lot of the accidents that occurred. And again, I want to thank the board for taking the action they have taken, and maybe in the next seven, eight months, we'll see something done about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item H, and that is a resolution to authorize an agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice for space that they occupy at the Juvenile Justice Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter a new lease agreement with the State Properties Commission for office space located at 560 Oglethorpe Street occupied by the Department of Juvenile Justice to begin July 1st, 2019, and expire on June 30th, 2020, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, fireworks at Lake Topasofki, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Munro Lynn Pro and Tactics Incorporated in the amount of $15,060 for a July the 4th fireworks display to be paid from Lake Topasofki's departmental budget and for other lawful purposes.
I think you said $15,600?
No, $60 is what's on that. That's what's on there. It's 60 on the resolution.
Hmm. Well, mine says $15,600.
No, it's 60 on the resolution.
Okay. Well, if we show a cha-, huh, if we show, if we show a cha-, how about up, up, up to $15,600? I ain't supposed to be $50 short. Mine says $15,600. She read it as $15,060. So, $15,060 for fireworks at 4th of July. What, just the-
The caption is right, yes, sir.
The ca-, the caption is right. My program was wrong, so, no, you don't need to amend it. It's right. $15,060 for fireworks at the 4th of July. Is there further, the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of fireworks at the 4th of July at Lake Topasofki for $15,060, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to transfer money within the IT department to cover certain expenses, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY19 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of $32,125 from Information Technology Repairs and Maintenance Computer Hardware Account to the Small Equipment and Improvement Account for an emergency UPS purchase and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye, opposed, say no. Got one, one no, but the ayes have it, seven to one. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item K, which is the transfer of funds within the sheriff's department budget from his salaries full-time to his overtime line, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY19 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of $1,313,500 from the sheriff's office salaries and wages full-time, benefits health insurance, benefits FICA, benefits health insurance accounts to the salaries and wages overtime, and employees' benefit workers' compensation accounts to resolve account overages and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? For me, let me call on Chairman Watkins and clarify one thing. My recollection is that the sheriff was there and said that his vacancies that he's had build up this salary savings account, which was more than sufficient to cover the over, cost of the overtime. Is that correct?
This is from within the sheriff's office budget. Here's exactly what you said. The full-time budget vacancies cover the overtimes and also the cost of the overtimes.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
You know, while this transfer is necessary and what we're doing is necessary, and yes, he's within his budget and it's, and it's still less than what's, what's, he's allotted, we still need to do something for public safety officials, and I've got some new thoughts to maybe share them with you after the meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying, I'm sorry, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment for animal welfare to cover some of their costs, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY19 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of $23,932 from animal welfare salaries and wages, full-time, additional regular and part-time, accounts to the professional services, repairs and maintenance, rental copier lease, operating supply animal, operating supplies medical, and small equipment and improvements account to resolve lack of funds in the operating section of the budget and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye, opposed no. Got one, one no, again, seven, seven to one. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item N, I'm sorry, item M is the appointment of, well, I should say, the submission of slates of three to the fill membership vacancies on the hospital authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission submitting a slate of nominations for the seats currently held by Joyce Schaefer, Patricia Robinson, and Ray Pippen on board of the Macon-Bibb County Hospital Authority and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend the code to correct an error regarding the nomination of members to the Friends of Rosa Parks Square Commission, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend the code of ordinances of Macon-Bibb County to correct an error regarding the nomination of members to the Friends of Rosa Parks Square Commission and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is the actual appointment of certain members to the Martin, excuse me, the Friends of Rosa Parks Square Commission, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing James Bill, Jean Bragg, Nancy Cleveland, Dr. Carmelita Dillard, C. Jack Ellis, Louis Hargrove, Sarah Hunt, Alex Morrison, George Mohammed, and Kanjal Patel to serve as initial members of the Friends of Rosa Parks Square Commission and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve a streetlight on Lake Lock Drive, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving a request for the installation of a streetlight on Lake Lock Drive pursuant to Article 10 of Chapter 29 of the Macon-Bibb County Code of Ordinances to be paid from the facility's management budget, services to government, electricity line item, and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item Q, which is a resolution to authorize the expenditure by the Industrial Authority of certain funds from the airport fund, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority to use rent funds held in trust by the authority for the following purposes: up to 25 hun-, up to 2,000, ooh,
250.
250,000 for repairs to Boeing slash kayak facilities roof, up to 250,000 for LED lighting, improvements for the Embraer air hangar in return for a long-term lease commitment subject to approval of the amended lease agreement and the amended intergovernmental agreement by the Macon-Bibb County Commission, and up to 75,000 for Middle Georgia Regional Airport Terminal improvements and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item R, which was a late addition to the agenda, and we added it, it pre-commissioned, and this is to authorize our participation along with Fort Valley State in a grant application for marijuana and youth violence training, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a coalition involvement agreement for the Pride Navigator Drug-Free Community Coalition Project of Fort Valley State University at no direct cost to the county to appoint a coalition member and for other lawful purposes.
And Committee of the whole actually amended that to appoint Commissioner Elaine Lucas to be our representative in that. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye, opposed no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Now, that brings us now to new business, and new business has come down from the county attorney's office. attorney's office and will be referred to commission, committees for further study and evaluation beginning next Tuesday morning, that's July the ninth, in committee meeting room beginning at nine o'clock on Tuesday. Now, there may be additional business that comes down, although can't be much because they don't have but one day left this week, but check, check the agenda that it will be issued late Wednesday afternoon. It's to have all of the ordinances and resolutions listed there, but those that have come down thus far are a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Macon Bibb County and the Health Department for rabies veterinary investigation and quarantine services. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. It sounds like a dog bite case to me. Now, item B is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Public Defender's Professional Services outside council and office supplies accounts to pay contract invoices. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is an ordinance approving and authorizing the appropriation of two million five hundred thousand dollars from SPOSS bond proceeds and/or SPOSS revenues from the 2019 Economic Development Budget Industrial Line Item as shown on the 2018 SPOSS project timeline and budget in conjunction with the intergovernmental agreement between Macon Bibb County and the Macon Bibb County Industrial Authority. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item D is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars from the state court judge salaries and wages full-time account to the contract labor temporary workers account for temporary salaries covered by vacancies and full-time salaries. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item E is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with COT Systems Incorporated in the amount of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to be used to purchase equipment for the online indexing of books and record management of the land record documents to be paid from the Superior Court Clerk's budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-party contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Central Georgia Railroad Company for the replacement of the College Street Railroad Bridge near Appleton Lane at no cost to the county. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. And finally, item G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an installment agreement with Dell Financial Services LLC in the amount of six hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and two dollars and two cents per year for three years, a total of one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and six dollars and six cents for the countywide Microsoft Windows Server and Office Suite Enterprise software licenses to be paid from IT's repair and maintenance software licenses and maintenance budget line. I'm gonna refer this to the Operations and Finance Committee. Again, there may be additional ordinances and resolutions that come down tomorrow afternoon, so check the agenda that comes out, and as I say, these items and others perhaps will be on the commission, committee agendas beginning nine o'clock next Tuesday, July the ninth, in the commission meeting room. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Hunt, you had also signed up to talk to us about naming the park in South Macon in, in honor of someone. Would you like to come up and address us on that? You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. A dear, dear friend of mine, Ms. Frankie Lewis, went to be with the Lord on yesterday about two-thirty, and she was a wonderful, wonderful person who loved South Macon, and she worked diligently for the community, the entire community, in developing that community and growing those young people and the adults in that community. South Macon was so much better because of Frankie Lewis, the work that she did in that community, pulling those people together and teaching those young people personal skills and teaching them financial skills and working with them and developing their abilities and making them know that they were important to Macon and Bibb County, and I don't want her memory to go unnoticed. I don't want her work to go unnoticed, and I want her name to be somewhere where we will always remember Frankie Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being in and appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. James Harvey wants to talk to us about a park on Third Street at Cherry Street where illegal drugs are sold and consumed. Mr. Harvey, thank you for being here with us. Appreciate you being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I live at the Dempsey Apartments at five-twenty-three Cherry Street. On the side of, on Third Street, there's a park. It's a city park, and I would say between eighteen and twenty-four hours a day, there's illegal drug use and selling at this park. It's a city park. I've called the sheriff's office, nine-one-one. I've called the non-emergency number. When I see them out there selling, nothing has been done. I've called downtown. They say it's not a big issue. I have all the respect in the world for Bibb County Sheriff's Office, but that issue, I live there, I can't bring my grandchildren out to the park because of the drug use that's out there every day of the week, and it's worse on the weekends, and I would like to see if we can get an ordinance that the parks be closed early, because at nine or ten o'clock at night, you can hear them out there fighting, they'd be out there shooting, and I can hear, and other residents hear it through our windows. So, I'm, I'm just trying to find if there's a solution that can be done. It's every day of the week, and I had a discussion with my son yesterday, and he was saying to me, why am I speaking out? I'm had to explain to him, if nobody speaks out, nothing changes, and even if my speaking out doesn't change anything, at least it's off my conscience that I've spoken out, and I'm praying that there is a change, some kind of positive change, not just at that park, but of all the city parks where families can enjoy time with their children, their grandchildren, but that particular park is where I live, and I can't bring my grandchildren out there. There's drug paraphernalia all over the ground, they drinking, they smoking, they, they dealing. I don't care that I'm coming in public, I really don't care. I'm not gonna hide behind it. So, I'm just, that's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. We appreciate you being in, bringing that to our attention. Appreciate your comments, sir. Finally, Mr. Donald Richardson has some grassroots reflections that he wants to share with us. Ms. Richardson, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
The Book of Ezra, Chapter five. Then the prophets Haggai, the prophet, and Zechariah, the son of Iddu prophesized unto the Jews that were in Judah and Jerusalem in the name of the God of Israel even unto them. Then rose up Sarababel, the son of Shiatil, and Jeshua, the son of Josadak, and began to build the house of God which is at Jerusalem, and with them were the prophets of God helping them. At the same time came to them Tatnaya, governor on this side of the river, and Shitha Bosnaya and their companions, and said thus unto them, Who hath commanded you to build this house and to make up this wall? Then said we unto them after this manner. What are the names of the men that make this building? But the eye of their God was upon the elders of the Jews, that they could not cause them to cease till the matter came to Darius, and then they returned answer by letter concerning this matter. The copy of the letter that Tatnaya, governor on this side of the river, and Shiatar Bosnaya and his companions, the Afrosakites, which were on this side of the river, sent unto Darius the king. They sent a letter unto him wherein was written thus unto Darius the king, All peace. Be it known unto the king, that we went into the province of Judea, to the house of the great God which is built with great stones, and timber is laid in the walls, and this work goeth fast on and prospers in their hands. Then asked we those elders, and said unto them thus, Who commanded you to build this house and to make up these walls? We asked their names also to certify them, that we might write the names of the men that were the chief of them. And thus they returned us answer, saying, We are the servants of the God of heaven and earth, and build the house that was built it these many years ago, with a great king of Israel, which a great king of Israel built it and set up. But after that our fathers had provoked the God of heaven unto wrath. He gave them to the hand of Nebuchadnezzar, the king of Babylon, Nakaldion, who destroyed this house, and carried the people away into Babylon. But in the first year Cyrus, the king of Babylon, the same king Cyrus made a decree to build this house of God, and the vessels also of gold and silver of the house of God, which Nebuchadnezzar took out of the temple that was in Jerusalem, and brought them unto the temple of Babylon. Those that Cyrus the king take out of the temple of Babylon, and they were delivered unto one, whose name was Shes Bazar, whom he had made governor. And said unto him, Take these vessels gold, and carry them into the temple that is in Jerusalem, and let the house of God be built it in this place. Came the same Shes Bazar, and laid the foundation of the house of God which is in Jerusalem. And since that time even until now hath it been in building, and yet it is not finished. Now therefore, if it seem good to the king, let there be search made in the king's treasure house, which is there at Babylon, whether it be so, that a decree was made of Cyrus the king to build this house of God at Jerusalem, and let the king send his pleasure to us concerning this matter. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, thank you. We appreciate you sharing those grassroots reflections with us. We've reached the point now where we recognize individual members who have a point of personal privilege. Commissioner Wynn, let me call on you first, and then I think Commissioner Schlesinger also has a point of personal privilege. You certainly may. You gonna use, use that microphone over? Because we want, we want to be sure and record this.
Okay. Judd, you know, I have only been here one year, but over the last year, I've learned to, learn that you are someone that I can confide in and talk to, and you're here for me. You're here for everybody. I'm probably the one that's caused you the least trouble, well, not trouble, not that anybody causes that many trouble, but I've asked the fewest questions because I've only been here a year. But Judd was always good to me. He was always kind. He never looked at the things I wanted to do as stupid, and when I'd say something I wanted to do a resolution, he'd kind of give me that smile. You all know that smile. And he'd say, it's not gonna pass Commissioner Wynn. But, you know, he would still do it if I wanted him to do it, so he was, he's a great attorney. I think, Judd, you've been with us ten or eleven years, is that correct? Correct? Something like that?
Almost eight years.
You know, almost eight years. We're gonna miss you. We're all gonna miss you. I think I speak for the whole group when I say that. I know you're going to, to other, another community to do the same thing, and, you know, they always say, the grass is not greener on the other side, Judd, okay, but what I'm gonna say to you is, I hope that the grass is green for you, and I hope that the weeds are few, and I hope you do well. We wish you must, much success in your future. And to honor you, we want to give you a picture of where you worked for those eight years and signed, signed in the back.
Thank you all.
Commissioner Schlesinger, I had you next, sir.
I think Judd wants to say. I just, I just wanted to say that, I was hoping I'd get a picture like this, a memento, but it has been, it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as the county attorney for Macon Bibb County, and I believe it's with mixed emotions that I depart, and I want to thank each commissioner and Janice and the mayor and all the staff and directors that I've worked with during my time here. There are true professionals here who really care about this community and work hard to make it better, and I hope that in some small way I've, I've contributed as well. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more thing before he goes, I gotta rub the red hair again. I'm sorry. And I, and I'm sorry for the Me Too movement, but I gotta give you a hug.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Schlesinger, I got you next, and then I've got a request up here that, Judd, you stay down there, and we're all gonna come down and have our picture made, will you? Commissioner Schlesinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Judd, I'm gonna miss you too, just like everybody here. You really helped us through consolidation, and I really appreciate all your efforts on all of our behalf here. What I really wanted to say at this time is that I think that Mrs. Hunt's suggestion that we name the South Macon Park, which is still in its embryonic stage after Frankie Lewis, who was really the prime mover of that whole thing, is very appropriate, so, Judd, if you could ask somebody in legal to draw up the legislation to do that, I'd appreciate it very much. I know the family would appreciate it too. And Ms. Hunt, we, we may want to approach the Cherry Blossom Festival about naming that gospel festival that they have that's now sold out and a signature event there, and that was really her baby as well, in her memory as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Yeah, but you, you, you're not in your right chair, but I'll call on you in Commissioner Lucas's chair.
I just want to say two, three things about Judd. You know, Judd's a true professional, a great lawyer. He's, he's had to deal with nine different commissioners with nine different personalities and wants and wishes and express to him what way we think this new government or policy should be handled, and he's always handled it with respect and always been kind and generous with his time. Of course, that's what you could say, that's what he gets paid to do, but he has such a, a nice demeanor about him, and he, he's just been a pleasure to know and to work with and, and has always been helpful in keeping us straight and giving us good advice, but he doesn't, he doesn't, he's kind of like a good waiter, you know? He comes over and serves us, but he doesn't join the party. He gives us good advice and, and lets us make our own decision and keeps, keeps us between the lines, so he's, he's a straight shooter. He's the most highly ethical person you'll ever meet, and just want to say it's been a great pleasure, Judd. We, we're really gonna miss you.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Bibbins?
Say that I, I've come to appreciate Judd. I know I've asked him a lot of questions a lot of different times, and I've never had any reason to doubt anything he said, because I felt that he was gonna do his best to give us the best advice he could, and I think he's kept a lot of us out of a lot of trouble and I- and I think he's kept a lot of us out of a lot of trouble, and I appreciate him, and we're gonna miss him.
Very good, very good. Mayor Protem got, got you a light on, sir.
Judge Drake is a true champion of integrity and civility. Most folks don't realize that he is a pastor as well, and one thing, no matter what you want to talk to Judd about, you could do that in private, and, uh, whatever you wanted to present, uh, before this commission, uh, he would hold it until the time was right, so you, he's somebody that you could truly trust, and he has shown over and over again that he is a true man of God, and he is a true attorney that represents this entire community, and he's represented this entire commission and the mayor's administration, and he has, uh, been truly professional, and I look forward to, uh, having an excuse to come, uh, get me some varsity hot dogs up in Athens and visit Judge Drake. Be blessed, my friend.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Allen.
Judd, you know that when you first got here, you said, "Oh, Lord, who am I getting?" We talked about that, and over the time that I've been here, we've become very close. We'd go eat, we'd talk, you'd pray for me, you would tell me things that, directions I probably needed to go, which I tried to, I tried to follow, and I more than hate losing that. You weren't just a, a person that was a county attorney, you were a friend, one of my best friends, and even the last day that we went to have lunch together, my dear old car, new car, rather to say, just broke down on me after he, I took him to lunch, thought it was gonna cost me twelve hundred dollars to get it fixed, and Judd prayed for me, it didn't cost me a dime. So, I mean, that was good, Judd, I mean, you got something going with the Lord, I promise you that. And I'm gonna miss you, I really am, I mean, you know, I, I call you and talk to you, even when you're not, you're not working, and you're always there to listen to us. I'm gonna miss that, but I'm gonna have your number up there in Athens, and like I said, I will be coming. So, thank you, God bless you, brother.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Allen, uh, and no other points of personal privilege, so I'll just, just add briefly, uh, Judd, we will miss you, and I think Athens Clark County is going to be well-served by you as their new county attorney, and I wish you all the best, and yes, we'll come see you. All right, so stay down there, we'll all come down and have our picture made, will you? And, uh, other than that, this, uh, meeting is adjourned, thank you.